2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'd like to ask Dr. Janine Darby to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, not to put you on the spot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. It's always nice to have a crowded boardroom. So, thank you for being here. So, I just want to acknowledge that March is Women's History Month, and tomorrow, Friday, March 8th, is International Women's Day. I want to spotlight some Montgomery County women who are doing great things in our community. First, I'd like to acknowledge the women currently elected to county government, our female row officers, some of whom are with us today, and I would ask them to stand once I call their name. So Lori Schreiber, who could not be with us, our clerk of courts, Karen Sanchez, our controller, Dr. Janine Darby, who did a great job leading us in the pledge, our coroner, Mary Woods, our jury commissioner, who could not be here, Joanne Poselski, jury commissioner, who could not be here, Jeanne Sword, Jeanne Sword, our Recorder of Deeds, and Tina Lawson, there she is, our Register of Wills. Thank you all for being here. Let's give them a round of applause. I look forward to governing with you in the days, weeks, and months ahead. Also, at a county level, we have been, we have been six female, there have been six county, female county commissioners that came before me that I want to acknowledge. Rita C. Banning, who we lost last year, Betty Linker, Florina Bloss, Ruth Damsker, Leslie Richards, the now CEO of SEPTA, and Dr. Val Arkush, who also became the first female chair of the Board of Commissioners in 2017, and I have been working to fill her big shoes as she leads the Department of Human Services. I am only the second female chair and the first black woman to serve on the Board. At the local level, there are hundreds of women in Montgomery County that are serving their communities in municipal government. Many of our councils and most of our school boards are now majority female. It's so important to recognize these female leaders, and although the United States is almost 250 years old, for almost half of that history, women could not even vote, let alone stand up and run for office. So this, what we're seeing today, is living history, and I think of my grandmother, who you all will probably get tired of hearing me talk about, but I never get tired of celebrating her, was born in the year when women were first permitted to cast ballots in Pennsylvania. I also want to thank our female judges in the county for their service, including President Judge Carolyn Carluccio, Judge Kelly Wall, Judge Wendy Demcek-Aloy, Judge Conahan, Judge Wahlheimer, Judge Furman, Judge Rothstein, Judge Sterling, Judge Tate Phillips, and Judge Austin. I want to thank all of these women for standing up to represent their communities because representation matters, and the more that leadership at every level reflects our communities, the better we are all served. There are also so many women that work right here in the county that make Monaco a great place to live, work, and raise a family, way too many to name, but in 2024, there are not many professions that are seen as men's work or women's work, but we acknowledge that has not always been the case. Progress has not always happened organically. We must honor the tireless work of women who fought for the right to vote, the right to attend college, the right to a fair wage, the right to be treated equally in the workplace, and so much more. And those that did it experienced discrimination firsthand. They were told they were, they did not have the strength to be lawyers, serve as elected officials, or even work outside of the home. They were denied admissions to institutions of higher education, and yet they persevered and broke the glass ceiling that allowed people like me to be sitting here today. And that's why I vow, as county commissioner, to continue to advocate for policies that create inclusive environments for women's and families at work. This includes strategies that address the barriers that still prevail: pay equity, affordable and accessible childcare, family-friendly leave, to name just a few, and I know my colleague, Commissioner Mckeesha, feels the same. These are not luxuries; they are essential infrastructure of our society that allow women and all working families to thrive and succeed. So, thanks for allowing me to do that lengthy comments. In addition, in Montgomery County, we have several programs that are supporting women, including our Small Business Grant Program through our Recovery Office that was specifically designed to support women, minority, and veteran-owned businesses. Angela Smith and Katie Joruski, I probably butchered that, I'm sorry, who are the owners of, and operators of Recycle, Read, Repeat, right here in Narristown, are one of those recipients of the pandemic recovery funding, and they are here today. If I could ask them to stand for, for a minute. They used the grant to establish community programs such as a teen writing program, Storytime for Kids, and made a donation to the Narristown Library. Angela and Kate, thank you for being here today. I have actually been to your store for a fundraiser, for Narristown Area School Board, and for all that you do for the community. There are so many examples across Montgomery County of inspiring women business owners right here in Montgomery County, so I just want to mention a few. Annalisa Smithson of Unleashed Counseling, and Anne Marie Chestnut of Anne Marie's in Royersford, which you know well.
Oh, yeah. Too well.
So.
Big pancakes.
Good. Well, I'll have to go there to enjoy, didn't we talk about pancakes last time?
Yeah.
Pancakes and syrup.
Pancakes keep coming up.
Yes, exactly. So, the takeaway here is that women's history is not ancient history. We are living through history-making moments every day. I look forward to visiting some of our county, counties' women-owned businesses this month and highlighting more women in history on our social media channels. And lastly, and with, with that, I'm pleased to announce that the 20, the 2024 launch of the Montgomery County Commission for Women. I'd like to extend, extend a special thank you to Donna Richmond, our Chief of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, for her hard work on reigniting the commission. The goal of the commission is to represent the interests and concerns of women of all races, ages, ethnic, and social backgrounds, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, ability, or social circumstances. The commission will encompass the concerns and needs of women, girls, and those who identify as female. The Women's Commission will be a platform for assessing and guiding the county's efforts to enhance services for women and girls across all demographics. We aim to pinpoint and boast opportunities for women in business and entrepreneurship, address biases and discrimination, and foster safe communities promoting gender equality and eradicating violence against women. Diverse perspectives on the commission are crucial for achieving these objectives. And so now, applications are now open through March 28th. We are looking for any community members who live or work in Montgomery County and who want a role and a voice in improving the lives of women and girls in Montgomery County. To apply to the commission, you can visit montgomerycountypa.gov/womenscommission. And now, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Mckeesha. Thank you.
Thank you. We have many exciting things in the works to celebrate Women's History Month, but also to recognize, as Chair Winder said, that we, we want to implement policies that are really going to affect people's lives, whether they work for the county, whether they live in the county, and paid leave, expanding paid leave for county employees, and increasing access to affordable childcare, were two of the things that we spoke about on the day that we were inaugurated in January. So, we're very much looking forward to following up on those two issues in, in short order. I also want to thank, I mean, many, many people will recognize, so, but there are many more that, that we will recognize throughout the month. But just on a personal level, some of the women who made history here in Montgomery County, Chair, or now Secretary Arkush, Alison Schwartz, State Senator Connie Williams, people who inspired me as I sought to embark in public service. There are so many people, both at the local level and all levels of government, and I should also recognize, from the perspective of serving as Chair of the Board of Elections and being an advocate for voting rights, I was invited by the first woman, first black woman, first South Asian woman, Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris, last week, and in a room of voting rights advocates, we recognize all the steps that must be continued, that we must continue to take to protect voting rights. And in that space, we recognize that it took 73 years, from the Convention of Seneca Falls in 1847, till the Nineteenth Amendment was passed and ratified by the 36th state Tennessee in 1920. So, it took 73 years from the moment of a declaration that was signed by 65 women and 32 men, that women deserve equal protection under the law and that they deserve the right to vote to make it a reality. So, we recognize that in 1871, in the middle of that, when Susan B. Anthony voted in a presidential election, she was charged and convicted of a crime, and we, and that history is still not understood by many people, by many young people, so it is important to continue to tell the whole story of what it took to get to where we are today, and when we see a retrenchment on voting rights, on fundamental rights that we fought for for decades, that we have to guard against that. So, in the spirit of that, one of the things that we're going to talk about in our next Board of Elections meeting and our next Commissioners meeting is what we're calling the Voter Hall of Fame, which was established by the state, that recognizes those who have voted in 50 consecutive general elections. I'm very excited for this event because I think it takes a, a very special, civically-minded person to vote in every one of those elections over many, many years. And we're looking forward also to recognizing a few different categories. So, young people who have voted in every election since they've been 18, 50 people who vote in every single primary and general by the time they're age 50. So, we look forward to hosting that event and celebrating the people who recognize the rights that were hard-fought for and set an example of leadership for the rest of the community. Thank you.
You didn't leave anything left for women for me to say, other than, "They're what? They're awesome?" I mean.
Short and sweet. Keep it, keep it short and sweet.
Tell me, keep it short and sweet. That's funny.
No, I'm kidding.
No, I think it's, it's a great month of, you know, recognizing women and everything that they've done, you know, locally, at county level, state level, nationally, even from a global perspective. I mean, I think that's, I think that it's definitely deserving of recognition. The list is long. I mean, we could be here for hours, recognizing all the successes of women throughout history, and I, I personally want to appreciate, I appreciate everything that they've done and everything that the women and all the, our row officers that have been mentioned, everything that they're doing for the county as well. I think we have a great staff and great team here at Montgomery County, and everyone's working very well together, and I think good things are going to continue to happen. I also do support some of the things that you talked about as far as, you know, childcare, affordable childcare, and extended leave and all that, so I just wanted to say that as well. But I also have the opportunity to recognize somebody today, where he's receiving a veteran's certificate of appreciation. He's been one of the hard-working county employees who went above and beyond the call of duty. Paul Huck was honored by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, thanks to his work with Coatesville VA Medical Center homeless outreach team. Paul, are you here? Where are you at, Paul? I know you saw, oh, there you are. I know I saw you when I came in. Paul's a driver with the Montgomery County Office of Veteran Services. Last year, a family of four with multiple disabilities were in contact with Coatesville VA Medical Center. They were in dire need of transport. Their vehicle had broken down, and they had no way to get to shelter, get to the shelter in Redding. This was unhoused and needed, I'm sorry, they were unhoused and needed a safe, a safe place to go. At a moment's notice, Paul rearranged his schedule. He picked up the family in Hatfield and drove them to Shelter in Redding, about 45 minutes away. Paul's actions, both his quick response to this urgent request and his respectful service for veterans and their families, were deeply appreciated by the homeless outreach team, the Coatesville VA Medical Center, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, and here in Montgomery County. Paul has been a county, been with us at the county as our lead shuttle van driver for the Office of Veterans Affairs since 2021. Paul himself was an active service member, serving the U.S. Navy from 1976 to 1980 as a fire control technician, third-party officer, petty officer. According to Dennis Miller, Director of the Office, Paul is constantly doing great things. For example, yesterday, maybe it was yesterday or the day before, was on his, day off, it was his day off, and he stood and dropped everything to drive, and drove a veteran to Philadelphia Medical Center for surgery. He, he picked him up, picked him, I'm sorry, brought him for surgery. He'll be picking him up after this meeting today. Paul, on behalf of Montgomery County Commissioners, we are proud to award you this letter of commendation for your service. Thank you to you, thanks to you, to Dennis, and all of our employees who serve the veterans' population here in Montgomery County and beyond. Your work is truly appreciated, so we just want to recognize you. We have a certificate from Montgomery County, as well as a certificate of appreciation from the Department of Veterans Affairs as well. So, I want to.
You can come up here. We'll take a, take a picture.
Wait, hang on.
We always forget to.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that's good.
Oh, wow. I'm going to work on shorter remarks. The one thing I do want to mention that Ramadan starts on the evening of March 10th, and in the spirit of inclusive communities, I want to make sure that we acknowledge our friends that are celebrating, friends and neighbors that are celebrating Ramadan this, this month, and so peace and blessings as you reflect and spend time with your families during, during this holiday. Okay. So, I'm going to call up Dr. Tamara Williams for a presentation about Development, Developmental Disabilities Month.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Tamara Williams. I'm the Director for the Department of Health and Human Services. March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and we wanted to take some time today to honor individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities who are thriving, their families who support their loved ones, and also acknowledge the work that still needs to be done to ensure those diagnosed with intellectual or developmental disabilities have the supports they need to live their best lives. Next slide, please. Our Developmental Disabilities Office in HHS is one of the places that families can go for help. Here, they can get assistance with eligibility for ID and DD services. We also support investigations in cases of suspected abuse or neglect, and we also help with individual support plans, which are essentially the guide for individuals and all those involved in their care. Next slide. In Montgomery County, there are over 3,000 individuals from ages 2 to 90 who are eligible and registered for developmental programs. What some might not know is that this also includes not just those with autism or intellectual disabilities and developmental disabilities, but also young people with chronic and complex health conditions that require skilled nursing. Next slide. The county contracts with providers to make sure that individuals have access to a wide variety of treatments and supports, including nursing services, behavioral interventions, in-home supports for daily living, supported employment and pre-vocational services, and transportation, just to name a few things. We want to acknowledge those with intellectual or developmental disabilities that contribute to our communities in so many ways. They serve as policy members at the state level, committee members at the county level to help improve resources and training opportunities locally, and let's also not forget those contributing to our local economy through employment, volunteer activities, business ownership, and enrollment in academic programs. Next slide. We know that many individuals would not be where they are without the work and support of family members, some of whom are aging, their caregivers, providers, and our supports' coordinators, who do everything from helping families to locate camps and identifying social activities to connecting them to family support groups. And we especially want to express deep appreciation for the direct support professionals. Thank you for the rewarding and hard work that you do to support people with a developmental disability, to make sure that they are living healthy, safe, and connected lives. Next slide. We also want to use the, use Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to highlight some of the continued challenges we collectively face in ensuring individuals and families have the supports they need. There are three categories of services that most families access for help, known as home and community-based waivers. Two of the waivers have caps of either $41,000 or $85,000 per person. Sounds like a lot, but we know that the cost of care sometimes exceeds that, and when it does, it creates a gap and a hardship for families. Additionally, there are just not enough consolidated waivers, which are the waivers for individuals with the most intensive needs due to severe intellectual disabilities, developmental delays, or young people with debilitating physical conditions. Next slide. We had not received, and I use the word "had," not received an increase in consolidated waivers for over 10 years, but that did change recently. Thanks to the Governor's Strategic Budget Plan, increasing the number of waiver slots across the state, Montgomery County now has an additional 100 waiver slots, and we are both relieved and grateful for this, as this increase in both waivers will have a tremendous impact on those who are waiting for certain services. Our staff in the Office of Developmental Disabilities are currently identifying individuals for immediate enrollment based on criteria set by the state, as well as urgency of need. Sadly, even with this increase, we also know that the need still exceeds the available resources. Next slide. So, I'll just end with ways that families can connect with us and learn more about our available programs. What you see here is a number to call to reach folks in our Office of Developmental Programs, and then also the website, which has a number of additional resources. Thank you.
Thank you to you and your team for your leadership in this, this area. Just over the last year, I've met so many families that are taking care of family members that have a developmental disability, and you don't really have an appreciation for how hard it, it is on the whole family unit until you hear their stories. And so, there's a couple of people that I've connected you, you with. So, what, what can we do as elected officials to advocate? Is it just, is it a money, there's just not enough money for more consolidated waivers? And do you have a sense of what the actual need is?
Yeah, so there's, so we have, you know, a number of individuals who use the community-based waivers, and those are really supporting folks to be more independent, live in the community. Where we really see the most dire need is for that consolidated waiver. Again, as I said, it's for folks who have such severe impairments that they need residential programs and things like that, and just more intensive treatment, and it is a funding and a resource issue. So, we try, we work with all families who call the office, and we try to, you know, to help them with eligibility, and then also to assess the urgency of their need, sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul sometimes in order to, to make things happen, so.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah. Any lobbying would be appreciated. It really comes down to resources.
Got it. Any other comments? No? Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next up, our Recorder of Deeds, Jeanne Sword, to review spring mobile events and, and fraud sleuth.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here to speak on this. This month is also Fraud Prevention Month, which is a big deal for, for things in my office. As you can tell from my title, Recorder of Deeds, we handle land documents, but I do not do it alone. Slide. These great people here, and I wish you could, my face was not there, so you could see all of them, they work every day to provide the great, best service in this county, and they alone brought in over $90 million last year for schools and municipalities, and over $1 million to our affordable housing for this county, to, for housing needs. Now, at this point, I was going to mention that one of the people in this picture was having a birthday today, but there are certain people you listen to in your life, your mother, your solicitor, your spouse, and your first deputy. So, I will not mention that it is someone's birthday today, but I couldn't do what I do without these folks. And one of the chief things they do, slide, is help me get out the word about International Fraud Prevention Month. Now, many people think, think with housing fraud, it's just theft, and truly, because our houses are usually our most valuable asset, they are ripe for fraud. But there are many other frauds out there that people will try to portray against people's property. In this county, we, I could probably count on my hand the number of actual theft of properties in this county, but we have seen other things out there and people trying to do other things, and we want to protect our homeowners here. Slide, please. So, in this county, we offer a free program. I'm going to repeat that again, free. It is called Fraud Sleuth. It's easy to sign up for. Now, you will see, if you watch TV, that there are all these different companies that will offer to monitor your deed for a price. They are using the documents in my office and letting you know when something gets recorded. Fraud Sleuth does it immediately. When something gets recorded in my office and indexed, you get a notification saying something has been recorded in my office. And it's usually something you expect and something that's good, so don't get frightened there. For myself and my husband, the only thing we've had so far is when we paid off our mortgage. That was a lovely day when we found out that our, our mortgage was paid off. Now, I'm going to go through how to do this quickly here, just not, not the steps, but next slide, please. There are a number of ways you can sign up. If you are tech-savvy, you can go to our website. You can even scan that QR code, and it will take you straight to our Fraud Sleuth website. You can watch a video on how to do it yourself. You can come to my office. Like I said, those great people you saw earlier are wonderful at signing people up for Fraud Sleuth, and I do invite everyone here to come down and meet my staff and get signed up today, right in my office, if you have time. If you don't have time today and don't want to try it yourself, we offer a lot of mobile Each, last year, we did 31 events outside this building. That right there is Leanne. She takes, she takes the office on the road, and that's what we call Office on a Road. It has everything there to do what we need for Fraud Sleuth, right there on hand. It's got a computer, it's got all the other things we need, right there, and we take it straight out so we can help people right where they are, because we feel it's important. This is a huge county. I know we all know that, that have ever worked in this county. This is a big county, and we, so we take our program out everywhere from Pottstown to Abington, Red Hill, to Lower Marion, to make sure we are serving everyone in this county, because we believe it is very important that every citizen in this county has access to their government. So, you'll see right now, just, these are just a few of the Fraud Sleuth events we have coming up, just this spring, and I want to thank Representative Bradford and Representative of And so we take our program out everywhere, from Pottstown to Abington, Red Hill to Lower Marion, to make sure we are serving everyone in this county because we believe it is very important that every citizen in this county has access to their government. So you'll see right now, just, these are just a few of the Fraud Sleuth events we have coming up just this spring. And I want to thank Representative Bradford and Representative Cerisi for hosting us, as well as the Upper Marin Senior Center and Pottstown Library just this spring. And there are more, this is just a taste of them. I'll show you how to find out all the rest of them. Next, please. Now, this is a very popular scam, and I bring it up because it comes out all the time. It's not stealing your property, it's not putting a document on my records. What this is doing, and it looks very official, it will come in an envelope that looks like it's coming from a deed office or a state office that deals with property. And even this one has recorded deed notice. It looks like it's coming from my office. It's looked like, it looks like it's coming from me. It is requesting money from you to get a copy of that recorded deed. And they will charge you anywhere from $80 to $125. One thing I want you to know is, I do not send you requests for money like this. I will never say, "Hey, send me money." So this is a deed. If you get the document from this, you're lucky. You may or may not get the document, you may just be out some money. If you need a copy of your deed or other property document, you can get it for a fraction of the price by going to our website or coming into my office. So please, if your family, if you're, they like to target seniors and people who newly, have newly purchased property on these because they know that people have just purchased property, they are a little confused, they think there's still stuff out there. So please let people know that if they get this sort of document, not to do that. They're just throwing their money down a well. So we wanted to make sure people saw this one because it is all over the place. Next one, please. Now, we are really excited about this, this Veterans Scam Jam. It is the first time we will be hosting this in Montgomery County, and we are so excited to bring this and partner with the PA Department of Banking. They do a wonderful job presenting information and making it fun. So we're super excited to have them. We'll have also local police and some other state government officials to give people great information and help them keep themselves and their family protected. But it's not just serious, there's going to be some games, too. The PA Department of Banking has this down pretty well. There are going to be some great games, including a bingo with prizes. So even though it says Veterans Scam Jam, this information is great for everyone. So please, come out on April 19th, learn how to keep yourself and your family safe from the newest, most exciting scams out there, right? And I want to also thank the Human Services people for opening up their building to us again. Sorry, next one. Okay, that brings us to our events. I said we take our office on the road 31 times a year. That's more than once every two weeks. We drag our staff out, and I don't just drag them, they actually enjoy this. This is actually, I actually recognize this one. We are right here in Representative Cerisi's office, signing people up for Fraud Sleuth and helping our veterans with their discount IDs. So I want to just quickly go through some of our mobile events coming up this spring. Some of you may know that we, my office has the great honor of recording veterans' discharge papers. Or that's that paper they get when they come out of service that gives them and their families all their rights. And it's important that it gets recorded because if you don't have it, or your family doesn't have it immediately, you rarely have time to wait six weeks to three years to get it from the National Archives. So we encourage veterans to record it with us, and they have it same day available to them. And they also, from my office, will get a veteran's discount ID card, which is right now is usable at 650 businesses around the county. We want, I'd love to thank all 650 businesses that partner with us, but we would be here much longer than Tom's remarks. I'm sorry, Tom, I just.
I can make more.
I'll give you the list, you can read it sometime. Anyway, so we are going to bring, we will bring this out again many times around the year, but this is just a smattering of them. Again, I want to thank Representative Bradford and Representative Gens and Representative Sorato for hosting us. We will be there. We cannot do these, honestly, I cannot do these without people that help me host it. So I'm very grateful for our partners who help us bring these things out. We also have a program that I think is completely unique to Montgomery County and the Recorder of Deeds Office. I don't think any other county recorder offices does this one, but I have so much fun with it. We do this one, it's called Monco Roots. And it teaches homeowners and history buffs and people in the community how to use the documents in my system since the very beginning of this county. We have, all of our documents, except our veterans' documents, are available online since this county was formed. And they can use it to do all the great research and have so much fun with it and learn about their community and their families. And tonight, I invite you, if you haven't heard enough from me today, you can come across the river and join us over in Bridgeport for the Bridgeport Founder's Day. I'm so grateful to their mayor and their council there for inviting me to present Monco Roots. We will be over there. Now, you can find all of these events, sorry, I'm trying to do things here, right, by going to our calendar of events. And you can get to that just going to our website, or you can scan that QR code to get information about our events and other great information as it comes up. And we are constantly adding to it. And again, thank you so much for letting me present about ways people can prevent fraud in their own homes and their own families. I truly appreciate it. My office is available whenever this building has people in it, and we answer our phones. So please do contact us if you have any questions, and come visit us later today if you want to sign up for Fraud Sleuth. And here if you have any questions.
Thank you. That community outreach work is so, so important in bringing your show on the road. So thank you for your leadership there. And I have to say, you take really good pictures. I was like looking the whole time. You have amazing pictures of the work that you're doing. In all seriousness, though, I really appreciate the work that you all are doing.
I don't know if you can tell, but we absolutely love bringing this out to the community. We love working with our veterans. I, you know, and we've made so many wonderful friends bringing this out in there. And just with the Fraud Sleuth particularly, made so many seniors feel more comfortable. They hear all these horror stories, right? We see them all the time, they're scary. And it gives them a peace of mind to finally have this, sign up for this. So we are so happy to do that, that's what we're here for. That's what government's for, right? Helping people out. So we are happy to.
Great.
So I was at an event earlier this year, and you guys, you weren't, unfortunately, you weren't there, but your staff was.
They're better than I am anyhow.
Well, no, I agree, you do take great pictures. I mean, like I say. But no, I was, when they, I was learning about the fraud, I was like, wow, this is amazing. Because then I started asking, because you see on TV all the time, these companies that advertise, you know, basically the service that you're providing as well. And I'm like, so I started asking about it. I said, "This is great." I said, "This is something that we got to make sure that we promote across the county." Because I don't think a lot of people know that this service is available, and it doesn't, it only takes a few minutes to really sign up for it. So I think that's a great service, so I think it's a great idea. You know, thank you for doing that. And I agree, you have an awesome staff because they were very friendly and, you know, excited about what they were doing there. And, you know, it was a veterans' event, so they were really, you know, covering both sides, you know, providing veteran services as well as a fraud alert.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you so much. And you said, getting the word out, any help we can get to get the word out. I obviously do not have the ability to do ads on TV. So, so we, but we, word of mouth and working with our state legislative offices and our senior centers is a great way we do it, but also just everybody here helping us get the word out. So thank you so much, Tom.
Absolutely, I just want to reiterate what everyone's saying. You have a capacity for making everything fun, including combating fraud. So I really appreciate that, and just the accessibility and the standard you've set in your office, not just for people who want to walk in anytime, but actually 31 times a year going out there into the community. So thank you for everything you're doing. And I think it would be great for you to work with Sarah Charles, Director of External Affairs.
I would be happy to.
Find ways to make sure that we integrate this into other outreach that's happening.
I would be happy to. And she might even have other great ideas. Each of these came along by themselves. Other counties don't really do these because it's not set in our statute. I mean, first, we started with the veterans' outreach, on that. Then we went to the Fraud Sleuth, and then the Monco Roots. And, you know, she has something else that keeps me out of trouble in the evenings and weekends, be happy to do it.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Gal, thank you so much.
Great. A couple of things before we jump into public comment. I want to acknowledge Mary Woods, our Jury Commissioner for Women's History. Mom, thank you for coming to the meeting. And secondly, I want to acknowledge, I didn't see you all sitting there, some employees from our Coroner's Office, too. So oftentimes, I was just out there, what was that? It was Friday, with Commissioner DiBello. And one of the things that we talked about is, especially during COVID, your work was oftentimes forgotten. And so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge you in the Board of Commissioners meeting, and thank you for all that you're doing, especially in a most challenging time for our friends and neighbors in Monco. So thank you for being here. Okay, so next up is public comment. And public comment, this section for public comment is only for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. So let's, we'll limit it to three minutes. So who do we have signed up for public comment?
Sure. First up, and I apologize if I mispronounced, Jenny Raymond Schader.
I'm Schneider, but I was talking, I put down to talk explicitly because I saw that on the agenda, but that's not something you're voting on, so I don't know.
Yeah, that would be for the end.
General public comment.
Okay, I'm already signed up.
Okay. Marilyn Muir.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Muir, Lower Southford Township. I'm here to speak about the temporary staffing services that the contract's been awarded for, to People Share. I'm assuming that this is for poll workers, or is it a contract for other services? For instance, the staffing of the ice cream truck procuring ballots, which I totally disagree with, that process. If the money is for poll workers, in general, you must be registered to vote in the county where you wish to work. And the county's trained the poll workers on their election day duties. People Share is headquartered on the East Coast with offices that blanket the Mid-Atlantic and Midwest region. And I'm just wondering if the poll workers will be registered voters in Montgomery County? Can we get a list of poll locations needing workers? And how many poll workers are needed? Were the, was Montgomery County GOP notified of the need to hire poll workers through a temporary agency? What is People Share's fee? Can we see the contract with the detailed expenditures? What efforts have been made to find poll workers in Montgomery County? I'm a precinct committee person, and also judge, I've worked as the judge of elections, and I haven't heard of any effort to get poll workers, any emergency efforts. $325,000 is a lot of money that could easily be reduced significantly. Will the requirements of the poll workers be waived or adhered to? Will they be registered voters in Montgomery County? And will they be U.S. citizens? Will the poll workers hired through People Share be registered voters in Montgomery County? And I'd just like to see more oversight and details on this huge expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you for, so if you have questions, if you wouldn't mind sharing them with our Board Secretary, and we'll have to follow up to get you some of those answers.
So, go ahead.
I could just clarify on that, the very specific question about whether or not this contract will be paying for poll workers at the polls, and the answer is, it will not.
That's what I was going to say. Because I asked some questions regarding this as well. And it's more or less the staff that's required during the tabulation and all that at the warehouse, and as were the workers and people that. And this has been something the county's been doing, but you raised a good point that I didn't think about, so thank you. And you're right that, you know, anybody working on the election within Montgomery County has to be a registered voter in the county. So that's a great point that I'm going to follow up on. That's something I didn't think about, but thank you for that. But I, and the money that is being approved is, it's not, really set up is not to exceed. Is that my understanding right?
Correct.
So I did ask a lot of questions around that as well. But you did raise a good point that I didn't think about, so thank you for that.
Who's next for public comment?
David Morgan.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
As I came into the table here, we were running out of agendas. So I'm going to try to, from my phone, taking pictures, I wanted to leave a copy. I'll try to find two items here for you. A4 is in the contracts, and that's psychiatric help. And I noticed today's presentation about mental health. So I'm not sure if that's a program which will dovetail with that concern that we're offering to have in-home visits, et cetera. Just that the spending makes sense, that everything's working together. And other item was B3 is $1.3 million for temporary facilities in, apparently this building, from what I could read. So then, that seems to be another big cause for the Justice Center program. And I'm so glad we did have a presentation on that with spending last time. And I'll be talking about that more in the second comment period. As I, I'm okay for that, we're general, so we'll talk about the Justice Center more in general. But those are two things, if you can clarify, that's all fitting into the big picture of all the spending for the large project. And also, what floor is the Recorder of Deeds? Anyone know what floor it is? Go to that later. Second, thank you.
Thank you.
Third floor.
That's why I didn't answer, I didn't.
Third floor.
I'm still the new kid, I don't know where our meeting's located. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Barb Furman.
As Barb's going up, I wanted to respond to the one point of your question is, the money that is related to Justice Center, my understanding is that's all part of the current budget. As, so, and believe me when I tell you, I'm looking at that very close, all the money, all the spending very closely moving forward.
Thank you for being here.
Barb Furman, Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. I just want to make a quick comment about women's history. I was a high school athlete in 1971. The inception of Title IX, giving equal.
Excuse me, miss, I'm sorry. This sounds more like general comment. I don't think this is something that's being voted on today.
It's only things that are being voted on, is what you're saying.
There is another comment period at the end.
I understand that, I understand. But I thought that it was things that you spent a lot of time talking about as well.
Just for votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts.
Okay. I am going to comment on the election process, which will feed into the money being spent for the workers, the $325,000. I am a judge of election in New Hanover. And I sent, I spoke at the December 4, 2023 meeting. And I also sent an email to Mr. Dean about the mail-in ballot, having access to the number of votes received in each precinct. And we never, we don't get that.
So, ma'am, this does not relate to the contract we're voting on?
But it's the money that you're spending, the $325,000.
That doesn't relate to that contract, though. So you can raise this issue during general public comment.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
On Zoom, we have Deb Spence. Deb, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, everyone. My comment is about the developmental disability increase. Does that include protection against abuse? Because my personal experience with my niece being developmental disabled, intellectually disabled, and living with autism, living fabulous with autism, she wasn't protected. And I don't even believe that, whatever. I'm going to get back to the, to the budget, I mean, to the agenda. So does that include, or is this, like, that increase, is it for something else? Or is it just an increase in the amount of the budget for those particular agencies? And is there a way to write my questions down? Because I had a question last time meeting, and I know you all have a lot going on and may forget the questions. I didn't get an answer to that about the volunteer program.
So Deb, we'll follow up with some of your questions. So Tamara Williams is here, Dr. Williams is here. And then we'll have to look back at the record from last meeting to make sure we follow up on your question.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just one other question, the temporary election workers. If anyone were interested in applying, do they go through the county? Or do... in applying, do they go through the county, or do they go to that temp agency? So, that's my other question.
I would just say broadly, there's need, we need about 2,500 poll workers in Montgomery County, and that's something that you can sign up for by reaching out to the voter services, and there's, on the website, there's a form for that, so that would probably be the best route.
But again, don't confuse the fact that poll workers, the 325,000 is not.
Separate from this.
Yeah, that's only, that's not for the polls itself, but there are opportunities to sign up through the county to be a poll worker.
And also be paid.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about poll worker, I'm talking about, in this, on this agenda, this contract, this is for work at the warehouse, is that something that if anyone were interested, can they go through the county to apply, or do they need to go to this temp agency? That's the question.
We can follow up with you.
On the website.
Everything's on the website.
Apply on the website, and voter services will follow up with you. There's plenty of work for everyone to do, so.
I'm not looking for a job, what I'm asking is if anyone in the county had opportunity to work, where do they go? Just trying to get clarity about that. And then, my last comment is, thank you, Jean Sword, she did take the fraud program on the road, she came to Pottstown, she stood on a table, I think she doesn't drink coffee in the morning, I don't know where her energy comes from. She really supported us and gave us information out in Pottstown, so I appreciate it.
All right, I just want to remind everyone that public comment, this section of public comment, is for pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. So, let's try to keep those comments to that. Thanks, Deb, for your comment. Anyone else?
No, that's all.
Okay. All right, next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 22, 2024, meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, I'd like to make a motion to that Ben H. Field be appointed as county solicitor beginning April 15, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. So, just, I want to make a couple of quick comments, and I know that my colleagues may want to make some comments as well. So, look, before we go take this to a vote, I'm really excited about Ben joining the county team. He brings a wealth of experience to the county's legal team and our senior staff. You know, as we've looked at his work, he's an innovator in, at using the law and litigation to advance everything from consumer protection programs to anti-discrimination policies. His professional experience with the city of Philadelphia will be a tremendous asset to Montgomery County, where he will be an advocate for our county's programs, policies, services, and employees. And so, I know as a county, we will be lucky to have him when he joins the team. I also want to thank our current solicitor, Ray McGary, for his service to the county as interim solicitor for the past seven months, and I know you had years of service before. So, thank you, thank you for being a valued colleague and friend to me, especially, our solicitor role is one of the most critical roles in our senior management team. And for me, as a new commissioner and as a newly appointed chair, your guidance, your leadership, your help in terms of navigating the complexities of this office is to be commended, and I'm grateful to you for that. And so, your presence, I know you're not going anywhere just yet, but your presence, your steady hand, and your counsel on all legal matters the county needs, really appreciate all of that. So, thank you for your service.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that and to thank Ray for his service and willingness to step up as interim county solicitor at a time where all of us are essentially new, having someone with your level of experience and expertise, having worked on these issues for decades that we're facing, has been critical, and we look forward to having his support and counsel continue even after this appointment. So, I just want to thank you again for that. And I'm also very excited about bringing Ben Field to Montgomery County. He's someone who has an extraordinary reputation through his work as a deputy chief solicitor in the city of Philadelphia, chief deputy solicitor, deputy chief, deputy city solicitor in Philadelphia. Marcel Pratt, who was the former city solicitor and his managing partner at Ballard Spa, called Ben a phenomenal lawyer, one of the best of the best, who helped Philadelphia navigate some challenging issues, including how to approach the litigation in the opioid crisis, how to make sure that the city got the resources that it needs to combat all of the effects of that. Having someone like Ben come to Montgomery County is gonna help us innovate, both in how we protect the rights of all of our residents affected by issues like that, that we can take affirmative litigation to help redress the harm, but also, how do we navigate difficult legal issues to make sure that we use our authority to the fullest within the confines of what the state legislature puts around us here in county government? So, I'm really thrilled to have him and looking forward to welcoming him here on April 15.
Great. Any additional comments?
I just had, I had the opportunity to talk with Ben on Monday, I guess it was, or Tuesday, asked him a lot of questions, you know, as far as, from a solicitor standpoint, because we know that Ray's irreplaceable, but, you know, somebody's gotta step up, right? But you're not going anywhere too soon, because I guess we're still gonna want to work, have a transition as well, so, but I think that Ben will be a good addition to the county as far as what his background is, and we had a really great conversation, so I'm looking forward for him coming on staff.
Great. So, hearing those positive comments, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Great. Next up, Commissioners' appointment and reappointments to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. I'd like to make a motion that Olivia Haywood be appointed and Joe Foster and Patrick Costello be reappointed to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31, 2027, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments? I would just like to say that this vote will give an opportunity to have the first woman of color to be appointed to the Board of Assessments, and so, Olivia is someone that has experience in this space, has served the county, and so, I'm hopeful that my colleagues will share in that vote, because we're excited to have Olivia. So, with that.
Interesting.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, you know, I think it's important that our boards are representative, but also recognize that Olivia has worked in this office for almost eight years and really has the right experiences and set of, and the skill set to bring to make sure that they do the good work, which is, which can be all-consuming at certain times of the year, so it's important that we get this done now so that they can continue that. So, congratulations to Olivia and look forward to working with her.
You are so good with the exact numbers, so eight years. So, I knew that she had been with the county for some time, so thank you for adding that lens. Any additional comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to our appointment, new appointment and reappointments. All right, next up, I'd like to invite Catherine Halen. There she is. I'm used to seeing you on this side, changed it up on me.
Good morning Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners' Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated March 6, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 27, 2024, personal presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, advertisement of bids and RFPs. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Awards of contract, Montgomery County Exhibit B.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Montgomery County Exhibit B, excluding item number one.
Okay, is there a second? I can second that.
Yep.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve contract award number one on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments?
Yeah, I separate this off because this was a motion to approve the purchasing of six EV, electric vehicles for the county. Although I'm not necessarily against electric vehicles, I think two options, well, one option should be, we should be looking at hybrid first, not going to EV. I have concerns about the longevity of the EV industry. I also have concerns about the infrastructure that needs to be put in place to have these EV, the electric vehicles. I have concerns about what happens when these electric vehicles get the end of life. There's a lot of, I have a lot of unanswered questions. I know that staff is working on having some processes and procedures put in place for the purchasing of electric vehicles, but I think that from an industry standpoint, it's still too new, and I'm not willing to support spending taxpayer money on this industry as of yet.
Thank you for your comments. Comment?
Sure, I would just add that we are prioritizing, or we have to prioritize in government, a transition to clean energy, and this is the one, one of the ways that we can do that in county government is to ensure that we're not continuing to use what is becoming antiquated technology, which is emitting carbon at rates that are simply unnecessary, that are harming our environment, that are really threatening people's livelihoods when you think about the full effect of climate. We were just talking about the tremendous flooding that took place in Lower Providence Township, in Bridgeport. We have to step up and show leadership on climate, and one of those, one of the ways that we can do that is by ensuring that through our purchasing power, we help move the direction of the industry, actually, to a place that is relying on cleaner energy, that is reducing emissions. And so, this is one way we can do that. The technology has come a long way, and there is continued increased incidence of purchasing EVs, and when you compare them to other vehicles, we can still accomplish all the same objectives. There are gonna be practical considerations, there's gonna be kinds of vehicles that we just can't buy electric right now, whether it's more, you know, whether it's certain levels of trucks and kind of utility-type vehicles, but when it comes to passenger vehicles, there's a clear answer here in that we have the option, it's gonna be better for the environment, for air pollution, and they will pay for themselves over a number of years, because you're not paying for gas and you're paying for electricity instead, and we can get that electricity from cleaner sources.
Great, thank you for that. And I want to echo Commissioner Mckeja's sentiments. It's a key policy area for us, you know, as we move forward, we certainly want to be cost-conscious, but we're having our esteemed CFO do the cost comparisons in terms of the cost of gas versus cost of electricity, but this will be a continued area of focus for us, for Commissioner Mckeja and I, so there will be more to come in the days and weeks ahead.
I just want to reiterate that my point is, is that the industry is not, has not come a long way. In fact, the industry is still morphing, because a lot of the local dealerships and all that aren't selling EV vehicles. Like they warned, it's, the inventory is not moving, the car manufacturers are cutting back on production, and even President Biden has started to change his initiative that he wants all vehicles to be EV by 2035. That initiative has changed. So, I think that it's a new industry, I think that there's a lot that we're gonna learn, I think that things are gonna change over time, and again, I just don't feel that we're at the point where, and look, I'm all about doing what's necessary for the environment. I know that there's a lot of back-and-forth conversations about carbon monoxide, dioxide, myxide, whatever, emissions, and we could get into a whole extensive conversation around that, but the flooding that's happened in Lower Providence has nothing to do with gas-powered vehicles, so we can have a whole conversation about stormwater management as well. But again, it's, we need to really be focused on, our first priority is we're responsible for proper spending of taxpayer money, and that's what's most important.
We don't need to have a debate, but I will say, I think that was a 500-year flood in Lower Providence, and these kinds of severe weather events are becoming more frequent because of what is happening to the climate, which is happening because of carbon emissions, which are in a significant portion due to vehicles.
So, I'll have the, I think I'll have the final word, and this is just one step in this direction, and we are going to do the due diligence, right? And I know, Tom, you will do that right alongside us, but we'll do the due diligence to be cognizant of how we're spending taxpayer dollars, but also, you know, prioritizing the county's role around climate change. So, all right, with that, we'll move to a vote. So, I will do a roll call vote here. So, Commissioner Mckeja?
This is, can you restate the motion?
So, I'll restate the motion to approve contract award on attached Exhibit B. Can I, do you want me to do a roll?
Award number one.
What?
Award number.
Award number one, award number one. Yep, you got it.
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Commissioner Mckeja? I'm aye, and?
No.
And Commissioner DiBello is a no. Motion carries. All right, next up, general public comment. Arthur Herron.
As you recall, I was here two weeks ago talking about massive guardianship scam that's been going on in the courthouse for decades involving corrupt judges, corrupt guardians, corrupt lawyers, and victimizing families and their loved ones. And I plan to be here every two weeks to give you a little bit more information, just because of the time limitation.
So, Arthur, before you proceed, I just want to remind you that it has to be germane to county business, and your issue that you raised last week, while I'm empathetic to it, unfortunately, it's with the courts, and we don't have oversight of court's decisions. So, I just want to make sure that what you bring up today will stay germane to what this Board of Commissioners has oversight.
Well, as I understand your website, you do, you are involved with court business.
So, the answer to your question is, the county provides funding to the courts, but we have no power over the courts and the way they're run. The courts are a separate legal entity, and they govern themselves. There are ways to address concerns you have with the courts through, there's a judicial ethics board, and also through the Supreme Court, ultimately, that governs the courts throughout the state, but not through the county commissioners. The county commissioners have no oversight authority whatsoever over the courts.
Well, it also involves the District Attorney's Office, who DA Steele has refused to have his detectives open any cases on the many families that have contacted him about their victims of guardianship scams involving judges, and that shows corruption.
And what I would say is, it's the same answer, unfortunately, for you, and that is that the DA is a separately elected official, and the county commissioners, while they provide some funding to the DA's office, they do not have any operational control or power over the operations of the District Attorney's Office. So, again, if you have concerns about the District Attorney's Office, there is an ethics, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has an ethics and disciplinary board that governs the actions of all attorneys within the state, including the district attorney. If you have concerns- If you have concerns, you can raise it with them, but this board has no authority over the DA either.
Well, then you don't think the taxpayers, you know what's going on and how their money's being wasted?
There are ways that you can have the taxpayers know that, but this forum is not that forum.
More cover up.
Thanks for public comment. Charles Dykes?
Charles?
Charles.
I'm hearing impaired, so I'm probably going to be a little bit loud.
That's okay.
I apologize.
All right.
I haven't heard anything you said all day, but.
You missed good stuff.
I didn't, I didn't say anything important.
Yes, I don't think I missed anything. Thank you, I agree with you. All right, I'm here because I would like to see Morristown Farm Park open up for retriever training, actually, not just retriever training, but other field dogs where they can get out, train nearby, and use the park. I realize that this is something, when I say retriever training, you guys are, what the heck is that? I didn't curse. But it's basically a field trial. You can find AKC field trials, retriever field trials on YouTube, yes, YouTube. The retrieves are anywhere from 100 to 400 yards long, and you'll have three to four stations out there, and they'll be thrown one at a time, and when the dog, when the all four are down, or all three, the dog will be sent. The handler will be told, you can release your dog, at which time the dog has to remember all the marks. Now, the only time we could use the farm park is after harvest, and after harvest, if they are not having any hunts, because we don't want to be out there when people are shooting. And if we could get like a week's notice before they put down the herbicides to kill all the green stuff.
Okay.
So it's, it's a, it's a short period.
Okay.
You know, it's not that long, but it would do a lot of people in Montgomery, Bucks, and nearby communities who have retrievers and other dog breeds, spaniels, and what, there's a lot that use fields. And if you can hook up with me, I would be more than happy, you know, if you could get a, a group of your, your people, and I could go over to them, I could explain what, what's involved, and I could even give them a demonstration with my flat-coated retriever, and I know nobody knows what that is.
I do not, but.
But they're fantastic dogs.
Okay, well, we have your contact information?
I just have a quick question, because I'm, I'm familiar with this. Just a quick question, is, are you talking about how, as an organization coming in with planned events?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
My hearing is, like I said, I heard nothing all day.
Yeah, I'm familiar with this, these type of things. Are you talking about an organization with planned events, or just coming every weekend just to, to, to practice?
Well, weekend and weekdays.
To practice or have? To practice and planned events.
Planned events, I could see that might happen, but it's such a short window.
Right.
That that would be really difficult.
Well, I don't know if you're going to do like competi, because there's, there's places you could do competitions, there's places where you can, you could get, you're training, and you get certificates.
For competition.
So there's a whole different, that's what I'm just trying to understand, so.
Yeah.
Well, we could reach out, we'll, I'd like to get more information, so it's, it's something, I'm very familiar with it, and I think that.
It would be nice, because I'm, I'm over in Penn Square Village, where my grandfather was there, Jimmy Dykes, all player. It would be nice because it's close.
Yeah.
But I have to travel three, four hours.
Yeah.
All the farms are gone.
Yeah, I know.
You know, farmers used to allow us to use their fields, and sometimes even hunt, but they're gone.
Yep, so we'll, we'll, we'll follow up, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Molik?
Jim Molik, Horseth, I attended the election board meeting two months ago, and posed a bunch of questions to you guys about election integrity, and I haven't heard anything about it. No response. So I'm going to kind of go through it again. I understand how you are concerned about, you know, getting people to the polls and access. Me personally, I find fraud to be more of a concern than access, because fraud cancels out my vote, and that's why I came to you guys with my questions, which haven't been answered. So one of them was about signature verification, how that's done, who's in charge, what's the procedure, how is it followed, do you have video recordings of, of what's going on? And I never got an answer. So I'd like to see what procedures are in place to make sure that the signature verification is legit.
You're talking about the mail-in ballots?
Yeah, yeah. Integrity of the voter rolls. What's the procedure to identify and purge voters who are deceased? Who's in charge, what's the procedures, how often is it done, and when's the last time your voter rolls have been purged of people who are deceased? Because we have an election coming up, and if that hasn't been done, then you can't assure us that we have election integrity. The third thing I told you was, what's the procedure to identify and purge voters who have moved out of the county or out of the state? Who's in charge of that? What's the procedure? How often are the, the rolls purged of these people? I kind of did my own research on this. I went, I know some people who moved three years ago out of state, so I went and looked up their voter registration. They're still active. That can't happen. That can't happen. When I asked for an explanation, I heard, I was told that it's on them to change their registration. So if they don't, nobody's watching it, nobody's following it, nobody's acting on it, and we have people who could potentially vote here, who live out of state, and you guys don't have a process or procedure in place to catch that. So again, I pose these questions again with the caveat that I actually have some evidence that you have, maybe have a problem in one of those areas. So if you could get back to me, let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jenny Rameshneider?
I'll pose my disability questions with Dr. Williams directly later, but I'm Jenny Rameshneider with, in Lower Providence. So I also have a guardianship issue, but this is directly related to a county service. I first read this almost identical testimony on May 3, 2023, and had been here many times before and since. To date, after two years of pleading, I've yet to receive any contact from any county commissioner. I'm here to once again implore you to scrutinize your detrimental guardianship system. On November 30, 2021, on the steps of this very building, an 84-year-old, legally blind, petrified and confused grandmother was seized by the county, forced into a car with a strange man, and dumped into a facility in the midst of a severe, ongoing COVID outbreak. She was given no explanation as to why her life was abruptly destroyed, and had no opportunity to return home for as much as a comb. Her crime, memory loss. True criminals are treated better than this. Her life was stolen, she was isolated, she was forbidden to leave the facility for family gatherings or even for essential appointments. Her children, and I'm happy to share these more close up, were prevented, well, he had to fight for the right to visit her and drive her to the eye doctor. Look at this. This is how he took care of her.
Can you say?
Pardon?
What, what, is she in a, what facility is she?
Facility, it's, I'm, I'm just cutting into my time.
We'll, we'll give you a couple more minutes, but.
It's changed names multiple times, and we were trying to transfer her out, we've been trying to transfer her out. But it started out, we called it Manor Scare, Manor Care, King of Prussia.
Okay, I just wanted to know that that is.
And now it's, was Promedic, and now it's Genesis.
Okay, so that's a, so that's not county.
No, but the county is responsible for putting her there.
Okay.
In the facility, she has endured neurotores, experienced extreme panic when she can't find the inaccessible call button, laying in urine for hours on end, had woefully insufficient mental stimulation and physical activity, been deprived of regular hugs from her children, and prohibited from attending events as important as a funeral of a man she loved for 68 years.
Excuse me, ma'am, what you're now complaining about is the treatment that she received at Genesis.
But the county put her there, so I'm getting to that, okay? With the stroke of a county judge's pen, her body and money were owned by complete strangers. Okay, the county took her, the county assigned a guardian without sufficient evidence, the county adult punishment services, they call themselves protection services, I'm going off of my script here to explain to you how it's related to the county. The county forced a guardian on her, a complete stranger who never met her, never spoke to her, didn't know her needs, didn't know she had a prosthetic eye, didn't know her dietary restrictions, knew nothing about her, took her in a facility, like I said, with no warning, took her from the court when she was deemed incapacitated, took her immediately, that minute. No mediation, nothing.
But that was a judge.
The, the county forced her into that situation. We did not ask.
I just, I just want to be, I want to be clear, so.
Yes, I get that. Okay, so let me, I want to remind you, okay? You do name county department heads, you appoint county employees, and you determine their salaries, okay? There's no reason that you can't intervene in this in some way. I get tired of hearing that everybody tells me it's somebody else's responsibility. I get to judge me the final decision, but the county put her in this, the county put her in this situation, and I, I need someone in the county, in a position of authority, to talk to me about how to prevent this from happening to other people.
Is this a relative of yours?
This is my mother. This is my mother.
So have you, have you pressed charges against the facility?
We, we have, you wouldn't even believe the things we have. We've, we actually have guardianship of her now. I recorded everything every single day, and fought, came to court four times until they gave us control back.
So you do have control back.
We do, okay. But now I'm doing everything I can to make sure this doesn't happen to other people.
Understood. Thank you for raising it. Marlene Laska?
Good morning. Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township. Thank you for everything you do to keep Monco's elections running smoothly. We thank you for your willingness to be open and accountable, approachable. We were hoping to present this information at a scheduled board of election meeting, but however, given the time to the primary is short, we decided to communicate via this VOC comment. According to a Vasmussen poll, 68% of overall voters are not confident of election results. We believe that the two transparency measures approaches will help to restore voter confidence. One, Pennsylvania Election Code, Section 1117-A, requires Monco to perform a 2% recount, or 2,000 ballots, whichever is less, using a method that is different than that used on election night to confirm that both methods produce the same results. As a model, York County hand counts three, three full randomly selected precincts to confirm the results of the machine count. This alternate method would be a hand count and a full recount of three precincts, so three precincts in full. Hand counting is low cost, simple, efficient, legal, and approved by Pennsylvania Department of State. Also, there are small precincts in Monco. Section, and two, Section 3154 of Pennsylvania law requires that reconciliation be accomplished, which is done by reconciling, reconciling ballots cast with the number of eligible voters who voted via all ballot types, in person, provisional, absentee, and mail-in. For the overall county, the number of ballots, ballots cast cannot exceed the total number of registered voters who voted. So one vote for one qualified elector gives the public the confidence that the commission addressed the concerns concerning more ballots than voters in general elections. Ballots cast are recorded in the official results, voters who voted are recorded in the shore system, and both matching up is success. So again, both of these methods above are easy, low cost, and effective ways to address the current crises and confidence that so many of our fellow citizens are experiencing. They also enable our county to proudly demonstrate willingness and ability to implement common sense election transparency measures. To note, we, the Pennsylvania Fair Election Monco, also registered.
Your time is up, thank you for being here.
Okay, registered to observe the logic and accuracy testing, we are waiting notice of the, of, when such will happen.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I just want to comment on the first part, because I've been over election, election service, voter services, and touring everything, and this was one of the things that, that was brought up, and I'm going to be talking about that, the election board meeting that we're going to have coming up, as far as doing the 2% count, or also looking at the possibility of randomly selecting a couple different municipalities to do, do a count to compare the numbers, so I, this is something I'm going to be talking about, because I, I agree that my, my, my goal is to, to ensure that everyone feels 100% confident with, with the results that are going to come in at some point in November.
Yeah, I would just add, we, we do some of that already, right?
We do both of those things, sampling and.
Yeah. So we do the random audit?
The random, limiting audit, yeah.
Got it. Yeah, and just as a general comment to some of the issues that were brought up earlier, one of the reasons our elections are secure is because it is public who votes in any given election, so the record is there. So it's not only capable of being audited by us, it's capable of being audited by any third-party group. So in your own precinct, you can find out who voted and who didn't. And that's, that disclosure is one of the reasons that we know that there haven't been any recent concerns of voter fraud. There was one incident in Delco last, I think it was 2020 election, where a man did vote on behalf of his mother who had died, and that person was prosecuted, and it was flagged by, through a number of means by the district attorney, and so there are checks and balances, and we will go through all of those at an upcoming board of elections meetings and all the precautions that are taken. But there's, you know, random audits that are done to, to find any number of irregularities, and there's also specific flags in terms of databases that get cross-checked at the state level, and all the voter roll management is done by policies that are set at the state level, I should also say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David Windleard?
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Tom. One, I wanted to say thank you guys for, you know, what you guys do as elected officials.
Thank you.
And I want to thank all the citizens for participating in the process as well, and the, and the sheriff's deputy for the security aspect, I'm a former law enforcement officer myself. And so I, this is my first county commissioner meeting to kind of sit in here. I, I know Tom DeBello pretty well, very great guy, great leaders. I'm assuming that, I don't know too much about you guys, but assuming that, you know, this, this board is, is a, is a pretty solid board here. Sitting back and listening, I do have kind of some election issue stuff, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, me as a, as a congressional candidate running here in this district, for you guys that don't know, I'm actually the Republican congressional candidate for the fourth district here. I just wanted to kind of make sure that, you know, we're listening to the people's concerns here and taking it in and, and not taking it for granted, like this is the greatest civil liberty, or the, the ability to participate in elections, and I, and I don't know how many people I come across that have these, these concerns, whether or not these elections are free and fair, or whether, whether, you know, they can trust in that process, and I want to kind of assure them that, hey, we got these commissioners here, and, and that you guys take that, those concerns. I think there was a lady that said earlier, that's, or somebody brought up the fact that people are on voter rolls and they're not, or they're deceased, or they're not necessarily living here anymore. I've heard these concerns, I've seen it in person, actually canvassing out there, where people are not actually where they're supposed to be, and I just hope that you guys take care of that, because I don't want anybody disenfranchised this, this election cycle as I'm running for office here, and I want people to be, I want it to be taken seriously. I'm a combat veteran, this is something I fought for in the United States. I want to make sure that every citizen here has the ability to go down and vote, whether you're a Democrat, whether you're an independent, or whether you're a Republican, that you feel like your vote actually matters. that you feel like your vote actually matters and it, it counts. The second piece was, I was just kind of listening and sitting back, and I've got 50 seconds, so I'll make this quick. On your, on your contract aspect for the, the climate change, please protect our farms. Please protect our farms because I'm having to go down to Berks County where foreign governments are coming in and buying up farmlands in the name of climate change using the Inflation Reduction Act to take advantage of that 30% tax break. So I know you're huge on climate change, but you've got to protect these farms from foreign governments. That's, that's all I got for time.
David? Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for stepping up to run for office and thank you for your service to our country. So this board does take farm preservation very seriously, so thank you for raising that. And when you talk about disenfranchise, making sure that everybody has an opportunity to vote, I know that this board is equally supportive of that. So thank you for, for your comments, okay? And best of luck. Moving on, David Morgan?
David Morgan of Ambler. I recently spoke with someone from Maryland who addressed the concern about the PFAs that were, protection for abuse orders that were sadly, to say, a high level at last meeting. And they mentioned something called a peace order where encouragement is to stay together as a committed couple, and hopefully a loving commitment is there, developed and understanding forgiveness. And it's maybe only determined by the state, and being a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it might be out of your control, I'm not sure, but I just felt a new possibility. Because when there's a breakdown in the family such that people have to leave the housing, that causes more homelessness because you have, instead of two people on one roof, you have people separately in different places. And there's a lot of aspects that sort of, when we have a committee, rather, we have a meeting here and someone has a specific issue like drugs, drugs affect homelessness because it's related to communication. That was mentioned by this person, a woman from Maryland. And also, we have distraction by oral devices and our, our spent, we spend hours and hours on phones. And, and so that's where it takes away from relationships face to face. So these aspects all kind of contribute across spectrums. And I'm just kind of bringing to you that interest in commitment being also a view in my life. I was just, I know as many couples who had a 50-50 outlook. Well, that person's only doing 48%, and I'm doing my 50%. And that kind of awareness to keep good communication, good sharing. And marriage is something to really consider from a friendship aspect, too. We were talking about that issue. And besides these relationships in the household of husband and wife that would hopefully be preserved, Commissioner Bell, you mentioned also trafficking. And I know that's a large looming problem. And so any efforts you do find out and research on having healthy solutions to that problem, I really appreciate. And then in my last 41 seconds, I'd like to mention about the spending. I'm glad that that was addressed. For the first time in a long time, I've been in many of these meetings for years. Maybe you might know that, maybe you might not. Lee probably knows that. Anyway, so.
I know it too.
So I try to just represent the taxpayers, I try to represent the conservative about homelessness, I try to represent health for the, from everyone unborn up to senior citizens. And so in relation to that, anything to, to look at these spendings like building plans for the Justice Centers, more intensive, so we know how our facilities are used and can they, can we know really the structure as well besides the costs?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Barb Furman?
Hello again. Barb Furman, New Hanover. I just want to make a quick comment about Women's History Month. I was a high school athlete in 1971. The inception of Title IX, giving women equal access to, one thing was, big thing was sports. The intent of the law was for biological women. This could not, the future could not have been known at that time. In eighth grade to ninth grade, we changed from a six-player game to a five-player game, which, you know, I'm just trying to give some real act, aspect of what the big changes were to when my daughters played high school and college sports with the advantage of equal access to scholarships. Over 50 years of amazing progress is now in jeopardy. So just wanted to make that comment. My, my other comment is about the, the process of giving us access to the mail-in ballot, actually the numbers of people that actually vote mail-in. We know, as judge of elections, I know what the number is about Thursday before the election, but I never find out how many actually voted of those mail-in ballots, how many actually came in. So it's not parsed down to the precinct. So on December 4th, I went to the meeting. I asked, Mr. Dean indicated that I could get some information. I also sent an email on the 12th of February, and I haven't gotten any answer on that. Basically, it's the denominator of how many, how many votes are out there. And I think that it is, since everyone, all the votes need to be in by 8 o'clock on election night, it is reasonable to expect that by midnight, or at the very least 8:00 AM the next morning, we should be able to know what that number is. That's the denominator. And, you know, counting for weeks later, it gives us pause as to, you know, where those votes are coming from. So it, I think it is an important piece of information to have. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have three people on Zoom. First up is Adrian Seltzer.
On mute?
Adrian?
Lower hand? Okay. Hello, Adrian Seltzer, Lower Marion. If I may just tell Barb Furman, she can get the list of how many votes came in by mail-in ballots by going to the results page after, that's on Voter Services. So the election results page tells you how many votes were counted for mail-in ballots and how many votes were counted for in person. So it's there, it's on the website. Okay. I believe the agenda comes out 24 hours before. That's not really enough. I would like to lobby for having it come out a few days before. It would also be nice to have more detail. The personnel report had no detail to it. The resolutions, I had no idea who was being appointed to the solicitors or the Board of Assessments. I saw that the diaper bank was unfunded, and I know that's really an important thing. I was wondering if any of the other places, any of the other places that got that money, that $75,000, will be providing diapers for people that need them. And I would like to know when the next election board meeting date is because I would like to share that with other members of the committee I am on. And I thank you for your work. Ginny Sorix's presentation was wonderful. She does have a ton of energy and is, is fun to watch. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Adrian. So your one comment about just not knowing some of the information, we have intentionally posted all the details in advance of the meeting, including appointments, reappointments. So maybe we can talk offline about why some of those.
Yeah, where it is. Okay.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Next up, Deb Spence?
Thank you all. I'd like to say happy Women's History Month to Commissioner Chairwoman Jamila Winder. I don't think that was mentioned at all. And I'd also like to say that being engaged in your local county, state, national politics, finding out the information, coming to these meetings, it's, 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 it's a, it's an, not only is it an experience, but it is time-intensive. So we're leaving our lives to be engaged in this process. And I know that it can be frustrating to get comments. But what I, what I noticed as I was listening to this meeting was that, and, and I'm going to try and be really soft with my comment, but I noticed that the men on the board were interjecting when the women were, were making comments. This is a board led by a very strong, competent, capable, intelligent person. And I would like for her not to be spoken down when comments are made. And, and when women come to speak, I don't want men interfering and thinking they know what the woman is talking about. You may not notice it, it may not be intentional, just a feedback. Please don't take it personal, but we, we don't like to be interrupted and have our mind read without even getting our questions out. Commissioner Chairwoman Jamila Winder does not do that. She lets everyone make their comment before making, you know, I'll get back to you or send an email or, or something of that nature. And I appreciate if the, if the entire board did that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone?
I would just say, I will be better off if Chairwoman Winder interrupted me more often. But I apologize if that was something that happened in the heat of our climate discussion or whatever it was. But I do want to acknowledge just the honor it is to serve alongside you on this and in recognition of Women's History Month and Black History Month and all that comes with, the challenges that come with being a first is something that is a continued conversation and is something that we've got to think about every day on, on how we can make sure that we build inclusive spaces and respect leadership.
Thank you for, thank you for saying that. And, you know, it's my manners that I learned from my grandmom and, and my mother, you know, even if we don't like something someone's saying, let them try to get their, their thoughts out. But I didn't take much offense to that. So, so where are my flowers? Do you have flowers for me? Chocolates? Caviar?
It's in the works. We have a muff, right?
I'm always giving him tips on what to do for his wife for, for important holidays. So, again, it's critical. She's number one. All right, who's up next? And lastly, we have Fred Dugan. Fred's online?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Fred, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, I'm a little frustrated. Is Neil there, still there?
Neil is, yes.
Unfortunately. So I do, I've met, Fred has sent me a number of emails, and he has been in touch with Becca. Becca, I don't know, she emailed you, Fred, and we, I would be more than happy to set up a meeting after this. I was actually hoping you'd come to the meeting. I'd be glad to meet with you afterwards or after the next meeting.
Well, Neil, to tell you the truth, I would have liked to have come myself, but Thursday is a day I'm a volunteer at Plymouth Elementary School. And I just, I'm on a lunch break right now, so I, I couldn't come in. I am, I'm free, you know, as I said, to meet with you, and only because, as I said, I saw in the paper where you had been, met with the president, et cetera, about voter turnout. And I think we did something in the Norristown School District some, some time ago, and we're also doing it in our synagogue. And I wanted to share some, the ideas about increasing voter turnout with you that I think you would find, I guess, interesting. So if you could just shoot me an email about when and where, and I'll be there.
Absolutely, yeah. We'll, we'll be in touch, and I really look forward to your ideas and.
And I look forward, and I look forward to speaking with you. Like I said, it'll take about 10 minutes, and we've had success in doing it. So I, I think, and this is, this is a presidential election, you know, coming up. And I'm really anxious to share with this, you know, with, with you. So again, please, as I said, shoot me an email, give me a day and a time and place, and I'm there.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. One more public comment. We have one more. Deborah Shaken? Deborah, can you hear us? Deborah? Okay.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
We can, we have a little background noise.
Is that better?
That is better. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. I will not present my original remarks because they were about the forest guardianship program and in support of Jenny Reimlich-Schneider, and you have shot those remarks down. But I want to emphasize that it was the County Department of Aging that started this. They were the ones who did not follow the protocol that is set down by the state of Pennsylvania on how to approach these situations and how to do the least amount of harm when people ask for help or an intervention is needed. There are steps listed to do, to have, to be the least restrictive and keep people in their homes and only take them out as a last resort. The county did none of that. They came and they took one look at her and they decided they were going to refer this to orphans court. And they just gave the family a notice that she was to appear on such and such a date, and she was taken to the court. The court just listened to what the county said. They did not do any investigation at all, and they just declared her incompetent, which was absolutely incorrect and a horrific decision. And the rest of what Jenny said happened. And this, this was just a horrible, horrible miscarriage of justice and of what the county was supposed to do, this agency. And your predecessors had no interest in pursuing this at all. And I am so hopeful that you will, that you will take the time to speak with Jenny and find out exactly how this practice of referring for guardianship and guardianship is handled and take some action to correct it. It is a very vital thing. It's not only her family, it is many and many other families that have been affected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. All right, I think that's it for public comments. Just want to ask, do any of my colleagues have any closing comments?
I just have one. I had a couple, but I'm just going to cut it down to one. Couple of weeks ago, there was, at a school board meeting, there was a topic of conversation. The topics are relevant, but there was a topic of conversation that there was parents from opposing sides having, you know, interaction with the, the school board and, and what was being presented. The reason I bring this up is because I was contacted by many parents within that area with concerns. And I said, well, I understand your, your concerns and all that from a county commissioner's standpoint. We, we don't really have oversight when it comes to school, school districts and what votes or what's being presented and voted on at school board meetings. However, what I did want to bring up is what was concerning and the reason why people were reaching out to me is because there's this trend out there, and because of the 2024 election coming on, and we're going to have a lot of, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of interesting conversations in the communities about, you know, who they're voting for and why they're voting for who they're, you know. and why they're voting for who they're, you know, so on and so on. But the reason people were reaching out to me is because there was a small group of individuals that contacted people's work, and complained, and made accusations, and so on and so on, about the comments that these parents were making at a school board meeting, including an employee of a certain township. And these allegations, I know will be investigated, and I'm sure some legal actions will be taken. But the reason I bring this up is because from a county commissioner's standpoint, I'm going to encourage everyone that 2024 is a presidential election, I'm sure it's going to be a heated year, but as people, as individuals, we have to respect each other's opinions. We may not agree with each other on who we want to support, who we're going to vote for, that's what the whole system's built on, that's what America's been built on, and that's what David Winkler was kind of referring to when he got up and made comments about, you know, why he fought for this country. We have to respect each other's opinions. We cannot go, and because I don't like what you said, we can't attack people, we can't go after their families, we can't go after their work, we just have to say, well, I don't agree, and move on. I mean, everyone is open and is allowed to have their own opinions, and we have to move back to respecting each other and respecting each other's opinions. We may not agree, and that's fine. That's, again, I want to point out, that's what this whole country was based on. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. I think it's important as leaders in the county that we promote that as well, and that's why you see the three of us. I enjoy being here with Jamila, I think that she's doing a wonderful job, and I think that we, and I enjoy, you know, even though Neil and I may not agree on everything from time to time, we leave here and we're talking and laughing and kidding around about whatever, and that's what's important, and that's what we all have to demonstrate. So again, you'll see us from time to time, we're not going to agree on something, but you're not going to see us turn into an argument, we're not going to get into a fistfight, none of that. We're going to say, okay, we respect each other's opinions, and we're moving on. And I encourage everyone. And we cannot promote and allow people to contact other people's employment and whatever else goes along with that, or go after people's families. This is all ridiculous, and that rhetoric has to stop. And I encourage everyone to take that message forward, and please, let's get through 2024, because guess what? December 1st, we're all going to wake up, and the election's going to be behind us, and now we're moving forward. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for that. Commissioner DeBello? Any additional?
I appreciate that. And look, I think I recognize if there was a fistfight, I would probably lose, so.
I know Jamila could really kick your ass.
Yeah. But, yeah, look, I reiterate, you know, we're going to have things that we, that are not unanimous votes, we're going to have issues that come up where we disagree, but we're going to focus on the issues themselves, and we're going to, you know, state why we believe what we do, and come to decisions. So I appreciate Tom approaching things in that way, and really recognizing that we have to set the right approach and tone, and that's important. So I just want to note one thing. Yeah, I missed a couple of announcements in my opening, which is that this Sunday begins the Holy Month of Ramadan, so it's a special time for reflection, prayer, and fasting for members of our Muslim community. And so I hope to all of those who celebrate, you have an easy fast and a spiritual month, and I look forward to joining many of the events around the county there.
Great. All right, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be Thursday, March 21st, 2024, at 10:00 AM, followed by an Election Board meeting on same day at 12:00 noon. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 7th, 2024, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Salary Board.
This meetings are so long.
They're so long.
I just want to say, before I sit down, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. It'll get better.
Oh, yes, you're right.
All right. I'm great. Is there any public comment for Salary Board?
No public comments.
All right. I'd like to invite, all right, if everyone that's not staying for the meeting could exit kindly. All right, so Catherine Halen, please review the Salary Board list.
Good afternoon, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated March 6, 2024, with the timestamp of 10:30 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 7, 2024, Salary Board presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 7, 2024, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.